Okay, I have seven oh, seven oh four. Apologize for the brief delay. We'll call to order the meeting of the zoning board of review. Today is Tuesday, May 27, 2025. Roll call. We'll just wait a moment for the secretary to come back. We know that the only ones aren't present would be Gail and Andre, I believe. So all other members are present. Item three is disclosure of no compensation or pension credits received by the board members while appointed by town council. Item four, disclosure and notice, zoning board of review members shall disclose any ex parte communications about any contested or material adjudicatory facts or opinions concerning the merits of any application before the ZVR zoning board of review. Item five is approval of the minutes from May 13, 2025. It was a fairly straightforward meeting. Vivian did send out, it was mid-morning, early afternoon, but I'm assuming that all had a chance to read them. It's really pretty straightforward unless there are any corrections or additions if we can have a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from meeting on 5/13/25.
Okay, second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item six is the continuance. Continuance of application, ZVR 25-3, application for a special use permit and a dimensional variance by attorney Michael Kelly at the property located at 35 Norwood Road, North Smithfield. Corner of the property is Manuela Garza. This is lot AP06, lot 0191, applicant seeking a special use permit for ground-mounted solar photogenic system as an accessory to a residential use under section 7.5.7.4, requirements for accessory use solar photogenic systems, photovoltaic systems. Also, the applicant is seeking a dimensional variance under section 5.5.1, lot coverage in an RU residential district. Okay, since this was continued, Vivian, we took, we didn't take the roll, but we know that only Gail and Andre are not present. Okay. The minutes were approved unanimously. So now we're on item six, which is the continuation. You could probably hold off on that information because that's all for, is that all for the next application?
This, well, no, just Michael's.
Okay, if it's for this app, why don't you, if you could bring it up to him, that'd be great. Okay, so I don't believe, Vivian, I don't believe we ever entered anything in. Okay, so we'll do that first. P1 will be the application, ZVR 25-3. It's the standard application. It was submitted P2 is the single sheet list contact information below for anything related to this application, attorney Greg Estabrooks. P3 is a quote, "plan titled proposed improvements prepared for Manuela Garza." Its original date preparation is October 18 of 2022. Revision six is the most current and it's dated 5/11 of '25. That's P3. P4 is an untitled memorandum dated May 4, 2025. It's titled memorandum in support of request for special use permit and dimensional variance 35 Norwood Road, North Smithfield, Rhode Island. And that is one, it's double-sided, one, two, three, four, five. Last few pages are just pictures. P5 is the radius map. There is no date on it. There's no information other than to show that it's Norwood Road and the circle is centered around Norwood Road. The 164, the lot in question, corner Norwood and Oakdale. P6 is the 200-foot abutters list. It's dated April 16 of 2025 and it was generated by Kai We have a little bit of a interesting circumstance here with what we'll call P7. P7 is a plan prepared by PE registered in the state of Rhode Island. Registration number is 13264. This plan was issued for permit on a date of 3/28/25. That's going to be P7. P7A, I'll call it P7A, is the very same plan with a second PE stamp on it. No revisions have been made to the drawing, but we have two stamps. The second stamp is registration number 8393, Daniel R. Campbell, and it's dated 5/14 of '25. That stamp occurs on both pages of the drawing and it is the exact same drawing. It is interesting to note that on P7, which is, was supposed to have been the original submittal, the dimensions are different and it's very obvious that there was an attempt to alter the drawing. So we'll get to that in a little bit. P8 is really just the second page of P7 and 7A, but for some reason it's blown up and the original surveyors, excuse me, the original PE's stamp is circled and dimensions are written in pencil to replicate the dimensions printed on a plan. P9 is an eight-page, untitled, unsigned list of multiple drawings. It's, excuse me, multiple photographs. There's eight pages of photographs of the property in question. T1 is a email slash, essentially an email received by, it was addressed to Don Fontaine, North Smithfield government, RI government. It's regarding the North Smithfield zoning board hearing that had been scheduled originally for 5/12/2025, special use permit for ground-mounted solar and dimensional variance at 35 Norwood Road. That was provided by Charles Tice and then Ashley, Ashley Tice and Charles Tice. And that's four pages with the cover Okay, and who would you be?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I'm not Mike Kelly. I'm not Greg Estabrooks. My partner, Mike Kelly, submitted the application. My name is Michael Resnick. I'm representing the applicant.
I think initially we have some pretty basic issues that I think have to be addressed and it would be my opinion strongly to the other board members that this necessitates a continuance of this application. So let me review them with you before you make your presentation because I think the presentation is pretty straightforward with regard to the application and the memorandum. However, I think we have significant, I know I do as the chair, significant issues with some of what has been provided. P3, so we called, we defined P3 as, again, this proposed improvement plan. And just, you know, as an example, for example, he notes on the plan, and this is a stamped drawing, it's not, it's not signed, but it is signed. I'm sorry, I apologize. It's signed, but in the top right corner where he shows the array to the rear right, somebody wrote 10 feet plus or minus, 10.1 feet plus or minus from the nearest corner. And I am quite certain that you know that the setback is 10. It's not plus or minus 10, it's 10. So I think when, that has to be adjusted to very clearly state 10 feet, not 10 feet plus or minus. That's item number one.
If I may respond, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
My understanding is that P3 is an updated plan. You have in your packet, it was provided to your zoning officer, updated plan that made those corrections. So unless I'm missing something, I don't have P3. It's not something that I was going to--
I have a plan with a revision date of 5/11/2025. What, what--
Is this the site plan?
Yeah. What, what, what do you have? Give us a minute. The bottom right corner. Let me just see the bottom right corner. 5/11. I have the exact same plan. 5/11 of 2025 is the drawing that we have in our presence. They both say the exact same thing.
With respect to that issue, Mr. Chairman, before we go on, I'd like to bring our engineer up and stamp the plan to discuss that.
Well, hold on. Let me go through this because it's on the drawing. Therefore, you're submitting it as factual and we can't accept plus or minus as factual when the setback is 10 feet. If it's plus or minus, minus is fine. Plus is a variance. So this has--
I'm simply asking the drafts person to put their stamp on it and have an opportunity to respond to you, Mr. Chairman. It's not me that's going to respond to it. I wasn't aware of that note.
Well, fine, bring them up, but it's not going to change what was submitted.
We still have a right to address--
Of course you do. Let's, let's keep this civil. I made a simple comment based on something that was submitted as factual. So that's all I did. Go ahead, sir.
Sure. Daniel Campbell, local design group, on behalf of the applicant. As you can see, it was stamped by both myself and the land servant. Typically, believe it or not, in a plot plan, the dimensions are plus or minus. Certainly, if you could, you know, proceed and have the conversation, we'll address that, make sure it says 10.0 or greater.
Well, you realize that the side yard setback, the minimum distance from a plot line is 10 feet. Therefore, in order for it to be valid, it must be 10 feet.
All I can say is, is from the survey standpoint, I am not your surveyor, I'm your engineer. Typically, even a plot plan that we submit for a building has to have a requirement of having a market specialist to make sure it's at more greater.
Well, that would be up to the zoning official. He can require a certified plot plan if he feels necessary. I just made the obvious notation that 10 feet plus or minus, when 10 feet is the setback, is going to draw our attention. And if it doesn't, then we're not doing our job.
I understood, Mr. Chairman, that if possible, what I can suggest is that we would agree to a revised plan as a condition, to agree that there is no setback relief required as a condition, and we'll do as builds to demonstrate that if required, which will, I think, obviate any issue.
Well, the only requirement is that you be in compliance with the ordinance. That's And note number six in that same document, P3, which is the site plan, it says a, and again, I'll note that the issue of a fence isn't necessarily relevant to the relief because that is in the ordinance. We don't need to see it, but if you're going to put it on the drawing and it's going to be ambiguous, then we have every right to ask the question. I, note six says, "A six-foot fence will be placed around the entire solar system." So I guess I would ask someone-- So I guess I would ask someone, the engineer, or the, you have two arrays. So are you intending to fence both arrays? Or fence, I assume you're not fencing the entire backyard?
No, sir. If you notice on the plan that we have stamped, both arrays have a dashed line around them that says, "Six-foot-high chain link fence typical."
This drawing has no such thing.
That's not the drawing. Interesting. The one that has my signature on it, show it.
No, it does not. You are Mr. Long?
No, I'm Mr. Campbell.
Your signature is not on this, nor is your stamp. We have a stamp from Stephen Long, registration number 1930.
Mr. Long is your surveyor for this particular project. I am your civil engineer.
I get that, but I don't see your stamp on this drawing.
I apologize, but I'm...
So that has to be resubmitted with your stamp on it. What is your name again, sir, just so I can put it down?
Daniel Campbell.
Oh, you're the same Daniel Campbell?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, given that issue, obviously, we could agree to a condition that that was done. However, I just ask, Mr. Chairman, that would satisfy the board? If not, I'm not sure how much of a presentation we should make this issue, unless you would agree as a condition that you would stamp that.
No, frankly, I'm, I'm a bit annoyed, and I think members would be annoyed, because there are multiple things that aren't correct here, and it should be reasonable for us to expect that an application that's submitted is correct in all of its content, and already, I have three or four things that are not. So therefore, and let me get, let me move on. The memorandum, which we're referring to as P4, again, I'll note for the record, this is untitled. The board members could have no idea as to who wrote this, but it is making assertions, it's making defined statements in support of both the SUP and the variance. It's unsigned, and we have no way to know who is making these statements a fact.
We can fix that right now. I...
Yeah, but you didn't sign it. You didn't sign it.
I'll sign it right now.
But you're not a professional engineer, you're making statements...
No, I made a legal argument in a memorandum, which is my right, supported by the documents that we put forth. There is, Mr. Chairman, you've identified some issues, and I've accepted them, and we're happy to work with you to resolve them, suggesting that that memorandum that was submitted by my office is inappropriate, is not accurate.
Counsel, am I being unreasonable in saying that when we receive a memorandum that's unsigned, that I have the right to question why it was submitted unsigned?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, you have the right to ask the attorney, you know, why it's unsigned, but he can clearly testify that he wrote that memo, let me just finish. He can clearly testify that he wrote that memorandum and that it is submitted from his office, and I think that clears up the issue. As a side, when you're finished with the dialogue, we need to go back with this new system, this being the first application that is actually uploaded. There is a document that was submitted with the chain link fence around it, as the engineer testified to, and Leo's going to tell you about that.
Oh, we didn't get it?
Everything's uploaded, so, just a matter of housekeeping.
All right, well...
And I'll just add that the memo that you're referring to was sent to your zoning officer. I discussed it with her, it was emailed by my office. There shouldn't be any question about who wrote it. I wrote it.
Well, I beg your pardon, but when I don't see a signature...
Just put it on the record.
Well, fine.
If there's other issues, let's discuss it.
Well, one of the...
The ownership of that document is foreclosed. I'm the only one that knows who wrote it. I wrote it.
One of the other issues that is clear is that if you're the author, you're, you're making definitive statements about the size of the solar array, but I don't believe, unless counsel is going to tell me that I'm wrong, that you have the ability to make categoric statements about the size of the solar array relative to its least relief necessary. That was a significant question that I had.
And that's why we're here this evening, so that I can present this project to you, make an argument in support of why we need the dimensional variance factors and the special use permit factors. And I have my engineer, and I have my install, so we're given the opportunity, we are going to present that testimony. That memorandum was presented to this board as an outline of what was presented. You don't have to make an exhibit. I'm very happy to do a live, and in open hand, you can rip it up. You don't have to be an exhibit. I'll do it right now.
Let me, let me just jump in for a minute, or just bring it down a notch. I really think that, as the attorney's saying, Mr. Resnick, that the memorandum is his guidepost to take you through his testimony. He has his experts here, he's going to put his experts on to support the documents that he's put forth before the board, and I think he needs an opportunity to do that. And I wouldn't say that that memorandum is anything other than what Mr. Resnick's testified to what it is. Remember, in these hearings, testimony, when it's established by either an expert or by an attorney, is just as compelling, just as powerful, as any document. Remember that.
Well, it's, it's also standard that when we receive technical data, it comes from a technical person with background, that's all.
I agree, Mr. Jim, but I think Mr. Resnick said that he's going to put his experts on to actually testify to that, right? Is that correct, Mr. Resnick?
That is correct. In fact, both practice of firms that take their jobs serious, to submit a memorandum in support of the project to a board, I've actually never gone to a planning board meeting or a zoning board meeting in my life, and not tried to give the benefit of the board of our position before we showed up. The other thing is, there's many municipalities, we get a copy of the staff report, so that I understand what are the issues. Now, I had great communication with your zoning officer and assistant, but there's no staff report. I wasn't aware of one. So I took it upon myself to draft something, to do my best to educate this board. You may disagree with the arguments, but that's what the document's for. And like I said, I'm happy to do it live.
That's fine. Now, I also, the last item that, that I have in my initial review was, I just, I'm at a loss to understand how it is that we are supposed to accept P7 and P7A when it's quite obvious that there is something amiss. Now, I don't want to start an inflammatory conversation, so I can defer to counsel if need be. The drawing is stamped by two professional engineers. Clearly, one prepared the drawing, clearly, one did not. What are we supposed to do? Am I being argumentative?
No, you're not being argumentative. That's a question I would ask that the attorney clears up through the testimony of his own engineer. We were looking at it with the zoning officer, and one was stamped earlier, and then, in talking to the zoning official, who clearly can clarify this, apparently, a section was taken out and the panel was moved, and then it was stamped by the engineer that did that. I don't, I don't think there's anything underhanded about that. Both engineers' stamps are on the face of the document.
Yeah, but...
But I submit that the engineer can testify to your questions.
But my issue to the engineer and to the attorney is, does Mr. Harash, who created the drawing, did he give Mr. Campbell the authority and the permission to stamp his drawing?
Mr. Chairman, I think the, respectfully, I think the more appropriate question is, is that necessary? And I, as an attorney for the town, I don't know the answer to that. I think that's a civil engineering question. I was talking about that with our zoning official, but that's clearly something that could be cleaned up afterwards with some housekeeping, or perhaps the enlightenment of the testimony of counsel. I don't know the answer to that, but maybe Mr. Resnick can help us, or the engineer. And you certainly, one more point, Mike, you certainly could make any approvals tonight contingent upon the verification that that document is, in fact, certified in the correct way.
Well, I'm a builder. I know what an engineer would say to me if I had another engineer stamp his drawing without his knowledge. And normally, you would submit with it, which would be fine, a letter from Mr. Narash, Harash, saying, "Yes, I give Mr. Campbell the right to use my drawing and modify it." That is what I'm accustomed to.
I understood. I think we should give the applicant an opportunity, put their application on, the testimony on, hear from their engineer, and see what it fleshes out. Really do. The testimony will be compelling, one way or the other. You agree, Mr. Resnick?
Right, and if I may, just briefly, Mr. Chairman, I'm sure that Mr. Campbell is happy to discuss those issues with me. I don't know the exact genesis of why we have a different engineer. What I know is this, and I say this with respect, this is not an enforcement body. This is a zoning report. Your domain here is zoning relief. We are here for dimensional relief from max lot coverage. And in fact, it's some of the most de minimis relief that I've ever presented for a dimensional application, because it's 1.3%. We're also here for a special use permit criteria, which I'll go through. We can go through and give you some answers as to why Mr. Campbell's stamp is on that, and with all candor, he's a professional registered engineer in this state. His stamp appears on the document. That's it. It's been certified by an engineer. So to suggest that we're not going to look at this application, or there's an issue with this application, because you believe that there should have been permission from the engineer, it's not before you. And I have respect for the concept that you're a builder and you know this world, and maybe you believe it's inappropriate, we'll find the answers. It's not before you this evening. There's absolutely nothing to do with engineering credentials, engineering enforcement. The Department of Business Regulation is the only body in this state that has that authority. So, Mr. Campbell, would you like to discuss a little bit about how your stamp ended up on these plans before we go through with our presentation?
Yes, because you like garbage, I love the drumming. So I was asked to review a set of drawings as to whether or not those set of drawings adhere to the requirements of whether or not additional structural modifications would have to be made, or whether or not winemoting differentials would have to be made. I reviewed the drawings based upon that and was able to stamp them. Whether or not he gave me permission, he issued a set of drawings, I reviewed the set of drawings and was able to re-stamp them. Now, that being said, the structural engineering of those drawings isn't really the point of tonight's hearing either. So I'm happy if you would like one set of drawings with one stamp on it. To make sure to review that, provide you a set of drawings to that exact specification post-hearing as well.
And, Mr. Campbell, may I just ask you briefly, notwithstanding this stamp issue, do you certify that everything on those plans is correct as far as you're aware, as far as I'm aware?
Can I ask you a question, then? Why is it that you, a different engineer, and if all of this is irrelevant, why were you asked to review, didn't come from this board, so why were you asked to review and stamp a drawing that was already stamped and already submitted? I'm just curious.
Because when the set of panels was bifurcated, they wanted to know that the same or similar structural components would be adequate.
So what changed from the original drawing?
Literally, the set of panels was bifurcated. There were panels that were removed from the drawing.
And I still don't understand why the original engineer couldn't have just revised this drawing.
I have no idea. That's not my jurisdiction.
All right, thank you.
I was requested to review.
Yep, I understand. Any questions for the engineer?
No.
With all due respect, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to know whether or not this board is going to consider this engineering issue that you've outlined in making their decision tonight, because respectfully, it's not appropriate. It's not what's before you. It's not the elements, it's not the criteria, and it's not within your ordinance, and it's not within the general laws. I don't know why we're talking about it.
We're talking about it because it's, it's submitted. Otherwise, I...
But I have an engineer that's registered in the state that just certified for you that everything's on there correct. You think he's going to put his stamp on it until he believes that he could be exposing himself to liability for one project, one evening?
I don't need to engage in argument. I'm doing my job as the chair when something comes in front of me that is irregular and draws my attention, just coincidentally because I have extensive experience in that regard. It is my job to question. You can ask any board member, have we ever received a drawing with two PE stamps on it? And the answer is no. So for me to inquire as to why is completely reasonable since it is submitted as an article. So please go on with your presentation.
Good evening again. Michael Resnick on behalf of the applicant, owner of 35 Norwood Road. We're here this evening to discuss two forms of relief relative to a ground-mounted solar array. We're here to seek relief from your maximum lot coverage requirement. This is an RU zone, it's a single-family residence, it's on .459 acres, that's approximately 20,000 square feet, excuse me, 20,008 square feet. The current lot coverage, excuse me, the proposed lot coverage, with the dwelling, with the deck, with the sheds, with the solar panels before you this evening, comes to 21.3%. A maximum for this residential zone is 20%. So the dimensional relief that we're seeking is not related to setbacks, it's not related to front, rear, side yard, et cetera. It's solely relative to that maximum lot coverage issue. The proposed improvements are a 20-kilowatt DC ground-mounted solar array. I'm going to approximate that that array is about 950 square feet. The proposed improvements are screened by an arbor green buffer and low-profile racking. That low-profile racking will be discussed by our expert. The arbor green buffers are provided, there should be some photos in your packet. Mr. Chairman, if you would indulge me, and I guess we'll make it P10, I have an exhibit that demonstrates that arbor viti fence. The planting area, the grade was raised about two feet. The arbor vitis at this time are about eight feet. Obviously, they are going to grow. I'm not an arborist, I can't tell you exactly how thick, but probably about one to two feet a year, based off of my own experience. And the arbor green arbor vitis, so a very robust type of planting vegetative buffer. And so generally, the goals here, the goals here is energy production for this house, and we're putting in vegetative buffers, et cetera, to minimize the visual and environmental impact. I will note, and I'm going to get into it in particular, but when you look at your special use permit criteria in the context of a ground-mounted solar array, it's really about two things. It's about the view shed, whether there's sufficient buffering from the neighbors. We believe we've achieved that with the grading and with the arbor vitis. And the other issue is sound, and as you will hear from the contractor that's going to install this array, there is no sound that emanates from the panels, and it's inverter, it's the inverter that actually makes the sound, and that's going to be within the residence, it's going to be within the structure. So there really should be no concern whatsoever relative to this because of that item being within the home. And again, the other big issue is the vegetation and buffering, and we think we've done that. We've met the special use criteria with that. So just very briefly, and I want to be clear, there are two things you need to vote on tonight. The first is the dimensional variance justification, and ultimately, that comes down to, is it the unique circumstances of this property, the land itself, that gives rise to the need for this variance? And that's the case. There's reasons why a roof-mounted solar array would not work. One, structural integrity of the roof. Two, voiding the warranty of that, of that roof, and other things that the gentleman that's installing the array and our engineer can speak to. So it really is, the sole thing we're looking for is because there's just not enough acreage in this property, and it's very, very de minimis. It's 1.3%, which is a very, very small request. One of the other items that makes this property unique, that would require us to do a ground-mounted as opposed to a roof, is the ground placement maximizes sun exposure on the south-facing soil. And I know I'm not an expert, but we can all take judicial notice of the fact that that's the way that the array will be facing, that's to maximize energy production. So that's the first factor. Are we here because of the unique characteristics of the land and not because of something that the applicant did to create this situation? She didn't do anything. She wants to use alternative energy. She needs to make sure that it's cost viable, and it's only cost viable if that array is going to feed power to the entire household. So it doesn't make sense to have a small array. It would be unfeasible to power this property. The next factor to look at, and I will go over this with Mr. Campbell, is the hardship. The hardship, is it, was it created by any action of the applicant? Was it created by any action of the applicant? And that's not it. It's the array size is driven by the consumption data. There's only one reason we're here. That's what she needs to effectively run this house and not have some kind of hybrid system. If we could have a small array, we would not be here looking for 1.3 percent. And we would just be focusing on the two issues really before you on the special use criteria. Is it buffered visually? And is it going to make noise that's above and beyond the decimal limits within your code?
Excuse me, attorney, could you please, where in the application does it reference the percentage of the coverage relief that you're asking for?
It should be on the stamped plan.
Which plan?
That would be P... P-8? Sorry, P-3, excuse me.
So can somebody please walk us through that? I see it in the top right corner. No, I see it. But can you please come up and explain that?
So the explanation you're looking for is purely the percentage of imperative panel?
What is the differential that you're asking for relief?
The differential we're asking for is 1.3 percent.
And where do you, just walk us through that zoning RU box, please?
So the overall coverage has to do with the building, the deck, the shed on the property, or the array itself. So the total square footage gives us rise to the 1.3 percent relief requested.
And what's the difference in dimensions? We have what square footage versus minimum? What's, where is it in this table?
So the lot coverage, as it states in the zoning table, is 20 percent. The building overall coverage, we have building of 2017. That includes the building of itself and the shed, as well as the panels themselves. So the additions of those get us to the 21.3 percent.
But is it ever specifically noted here? 20...
1.3. No, it's noted in square footage.
So where is the square? So you have building coverage is 2817. The lot is 20,008. The building coverage, which is inclusive of the array, is 14?
And then the solar panels themselves are listed at 275 and 605. One plan itself.
So that's 20.05?
The 14 percent is just the house.
Yep, yep. Yeah. And 6.05 is the panels?
It's, yeah, 6.3.
6.3. So that's 20.3?
21.3 total.
21.3.
All right, 7.3.
Oh, that's what I was going to say. My math is 10.3. So you're saying that the panels are 7.3?
Correct.
So the total coverage is 21.3?
Correct.
And the ordinance, the requirement, is 20?
Correct.
So you've got 1.3 percent is the differential?
Correct.
I hope somebody might be able to understand the frustration where I shouldn't have had to. It should have been crystal clear somewhere to tell me and the members exactly what the relief was requested. Is that reasonable for me to expect? And it wasn't there. We had to walk through it to get there. So 1.3 percent is what we're talking about when we're talking about relief?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Oh, before we continue, Vivian, did you get P-10? You got P-10, right?
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you.
One of the issues that may be on the board's minds, would there be any diminution of value to surrounding areas in the top position based on the fact that there's no sound that's going to emanate from the system based off of the inverter being within the building and the fact that we've got quality arbor vitis surrounding the area should suffice to preclude that type of impact on the neighboring properties? I would add, I know oftentimes, maybe not before zoning boards, but often in my practice before planning boards, when we're putting forth landscaping plans, you know, there's a question, are these plants going to, are they going to exist more than three, four, five months, something like that? So we would be very happy to agree to some kind of condition regarding, you know, inspection, maintenance, some kind of warranty to this board that that greenery, that arbor viti buffer will remain in place and will do everything we can to maintain it and keep it healthy.
As you know, this board really doesn't have enforcement capacity. If the board feels so suited, they can put it in as a condition. However, that would be deferred to the zoning official in the building. All of the issues with relation to, except as specifically noted in the special use permit criteria, is all relevant to the ordinance. And if you deviate from the ordinance, then you know well that that would be a variance. So anything and everything except the criteria and the special use permit has to be in accordance with the variance, excuse me, the ordinance that deals with the accessory use ground-mounted solar. Can you clarify also for Mr. Campbell, the engineer, with regard to the orientation of the arrays? You just confirm that they are indeed pointed towards the residence and not towards any abutters?
Correct. They are pointed inward, not outward.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Just very quickly with respect to the special use permit criteria, solar arrays are allowed by way of a special use permit in the zone pursuant to Section 340-5.18 of your ordinance. As I said, other than the max lot coverage, there is site plan conformance with respect to setbacks height. I know that there's that issue, Mr. Chairman, that you identified, but we would agree to make it a condition to this decision that there is no encroachment within that setback. And we would defer to whatever the building official would require to ensure that that's been met and there's no violation. I mean, clearly, we would be proceeding at our peril. And it would not make a lot of sense to construct this unless we're sure that we're not going into a setback, obviously.
Well, the reason, counsel, the reason that I brought it up in addition to what I previously stated is that it is obvious from the pictures that the sonnet tube, the structural embedments, were placed far before appearing before this board. Therefore, it raised the question in my mind when I review these things that, well, if those sonnet tubes are not in the exact right position, so what we can do as part of our resolution, and we always make a resolution in the affirmative, no matter what the application is, we can put a stipulation that we require the building official, zoning official, to ask for a certified plot plan, which will clearly identify that those arrays are within the appropriate setback, and that would be sufficient. Before you continue, can counsel please agree relative to 9.2.1 dimensional variance in conjunction with a special use permit? My premise would be that they can stand alone. The attorney's testimony or opinion aside, you could install a solar-mounted, ground-mounted accessory solar without the variance dimensional relief. As we know, they have to be heard in concert if one is dependent upon the other. Can the two of you please agree on which way?
Your question is somewhat rhetorical, but yeah, in respect for the little, it's a compound question. The first part of it, sure, if he has relief, as the attorney testified to Mr. Resnick, were it 20 percent, he wouldn't even be here on that issue. But when you do combine the two issues, as you know, that's the rhetorical part. Our longstanding practice in case law shows they have to be considered collectively. You agree as well?
No objection to that. And no objection to, Mr. Chairman, as to what you just referenced as a way to ensure a platform. There's no objection to that addition.
Anything else?
I would just like, there was an oppositional memorandum that was submitted to this board. It's the only one that I'm aware of of a substantive objective from a community member. I won't be long, but I just want to very briefly go over them. The first item that was brought up was a premature construction allegation. And as you noted, Mr. Chairman, we're here hand in hand. Should any of this solar array have been commenced or constructed before obtaining the required relief from this zoning board? No, it should not. However, this board is not an enforcement body. And your building official and your zoning department saw fit not to violate this gentleman or violate this project for it under the concept that we would immediately stop work, which we did, and come here to obtain the relief that is required. So, no, it was not done. He should have come here first. However, there's no violation. We're here to fix it. I don't think that there's any prejudice to the board or the community based off of what happened. And if you can, even though this is a little bit theoretical, it's probably not a violation of your ordinance to dig some holes in the ground and put some cement. It shouldn't have happened. It shouldn't have happened. But my point to you is, we're not here sitting in a posture where we've been violated. We accept responsibility, and we're here to try to get the relief that we need to do it appropriately. So no one's going to suggest that the footings being placed in, et cetera, before we came to this board. That's not how business should have been conducted. But we need to find a path forward. And speaking with staff, that path forward is obviously through this forum.
Before you continue or conclude, we're going to leave you open so that if we have the public, you can come back. But on the resolution, when we write it, if members agree, I think we should indicate that we will require that the zoning official receive a stamped drawing or a letter from, either Mr. Campbell makes his own drawing and stamps it, and then it's a dead issue. If Mr. Campbell doesn't want to do that, then he needs to get a memorandum from the original preparer giving you the authority to do what you did. As long as one or the other is received, then that is a contingent of the decision if it were to be in the favor.
So as I said, when I was up here the first time, I am happy to do that. Limited time, I took a review of what I did. Perhaps a letter in that case would have been more appropriate. However, we will provide you the final documentation prior to the building permit vacation.
Thank you. I think you can appreciate the reason I brought it up. Anything else, attorney, counsel?
There was an item about missing plan details. We believe that's been discussed. There was an updated plan submitted to you after this meeting was drafted. There's an issue about a stamp concern. Again, it's not proper before this board. And I would note that I believe that gentleman is here. I don't believe he's a registered engineer. My understanding from the memo is that his wife is a registered engineer. I want to be very careful here tonight to the extent that there is testimony put forward by this gentleman. As I understand it, he is not a registered engineer. So we need to be very careful about how we consider this testimony here this evening. It should be that of a lay witness. He may have experience in the solar industry. In fact, he may be here because he has a rival solar company. But I just want to be clear, as far as I understand it, he's not a registered engineer. And we're getting into that area, Mr. Chairman, that you have a concern about, which is clearly protecting registered engineers in this state. And so I just want to put that on the record because I always see the gentleman here this evening.
Well, counsel, I think if, assuming you've read the memorandum, which I'm sure you have, you realize that the vast majority of it deals with the technical aspects of the ordinance.
Understood.
Which is not necessarily in our purview. We do not deal with a vast majority of what is in the memorandum. That is for the zoning official and the building authority to interpret the written ordinance. And if there's a variation or you're not in compliance, then you got a problem. But other than that, as you've noted quite clearly, the relief is documented with the criteria that it is. The author, when we open a public comment, is of course welcome to come up and give their presentation. However, they're identified. We understand your point of view, but you also know that, again, the majority of what's in the document relates to the technical aspects of the ordinance, not necessarily the relief that's being signed.
Understood. I'm just simply pointing out that sometimes weight is afforded to experts. It's not to lay people. And I don't have the opportunity to examine the engineer that apparently worked on this. So we're being denied the right to examine someone who put that documentation together. My people are here. So I just need to note that. The other issue, roof-mounted solar, seems to be some concept that because roof could be potentially available, that ground-mounted is not appropriate. That's not the law. That's not your ordinance. The property owner has it within their purview to do a ground-mounted array or a roof array. There's a lot of reasons why people don't like to put solar panels on their roof. It is voiding the warranties. It's water intrusion issues. It is the self-slope that I mentioned before that makes the ground-mounted a huge benefit here. And there are serious structural concerns about this roof being able to hold up this array. But I'll defer to people with that expertise and I'm willing to flesh that out. Also, the shading, the dormer layout of the structure, it just does not lend itself well to a roof-mounted. But again, it's at the option of the applicant. There's no self-created hardship here. That's very important. There's nothing that the owner or the applicant has done to exacerbate this situation. They have a home. They're looking to energize their house in a green way. And as you know, there's local policies, your comprehensive plan, state law, all supports that, different types of renewable energy. And just wanted to comment as well, again, very happy to agree to a maintenance plan with respect to the trees, some inspections to make sure that they're there for some time. And again, with the issues with the building permits group of staff, if we're so lucky to get the approval tonight, to make sure that they have everything that they need to feel comfortable issuing a permit, we're not going to move forward with construction till that happens. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I would, for purposes of protecting this record, I do need to ask my engineer some magic questions. But I'd be happy to defer to you taking some comment from the public.
No, I think, finish your presentation.
All right.
While, Engineer Campbell, while you're coming up, can you also, if we can note it in the motion, either modify the drawing here with the, if you didn't, yeah, you prepared this one, right?
In conjunction with Marshall Long's...
Yeah. So one of two things. We want it to be crystal clear what the relief, the dimensional percentage relief is. So you either generate a memorandum that you can address to the zoning official and very clearly state the summary that we went through and the math, or amend the drawing so that it's very clear that it's 1.3 percent.
Sir, I'm very happy to do either one of those.
Whichever is preference. If we want to keep it simple, then modify the drawing.
I'm going to say we keep it simple and I'll work with Marshall Long to modify the zoning table.
Please do.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Very good. And Mr. Campbell, could you just briefly list to the board your credentials and your experience testifying in this state?
Sure. Again, my name is Daniel Campbell. I'm currently licensed in the state of Rhode Island, Massachusetts, Connecticut, New Hampshire, Maine, New York, and Oregon. I have a bachelor's science degree in civil engineering, a bachelor's science degree in engineering management, and environmental background as well.
And you are the registered engineer on this proposal?
I'm a registered engineer on this proposal, correct? I am a registered engineer on this proposal, as well as Steve Long is the registered surveyor. Correct.
And I, Mr. Chairman, based off of that testimony, I would ask the board to send Mr. Campbell as an expert in his profession, is a registered engineer?
His stamp is there to prove it, so.
Okay. Couple of questions.
Sure.
Did you review the local ordinance in preparation for your testimony this evening in relevant parts?
In relevant parts, yes.
And did you review Rhode Island general laws in relevant parts, particularly the zoning enabling act?
I did.
And you're aware that we're seeking dimensional relief tonight from maximum lot coverage, correct?
Correct.
And you've provided some testimony this evening that substantiated that the relief being sought is 1.3 percent in degree. Is that right?
Correct. What is allowed.
Would you agree, Mr. Campbell, that the reason that the relief is being sought with respect to the dimensional criteria is because of the unique physical circumstances of this property?
What?
All right. And would you, I would like to whisper you some of those items, some of those characteristics. And I'd like to know whether you agree that those are the particular unique physical circumstances that work upon this property. The property features a steep southerly slope. Is that correct?
The engineer, questions?
No questions.
You had mentioned that this was the smallest array you could install, a 20-kilowatt array?
I mentioned based upon the current, past two years of electricity.
And this is just a single residence house that uses almost 1,500 kilowatts a month?
Based upon the current electricity use over the last few years.
Okay.
I can tell you, just anecdotally, I have an 11 ton of light array on my house that is only the out-half of service current.
Well, anecdotally, I can tell you that I get a letter from the electric company pretty much every month that tells me who the best people are in my neighborhood and the worst people. And the worst people use 750 kilowatts. This is twice that.
I.
I'm just, that's why I was surprised.
I'm not doing too well myself. Probably the new mini splits.
I must be too efficient. That's all. Vinnie?
One more.
I have a question for you. Do you have storage batteries? Do you have storage batteries?
There are not storage batteries currently proposed.
What do you say?
None proposed.
So, what happens when you don't have the sun for a few days?
So.
It goes back to the grid?
Sure. The way the power works, if you don't have storage batteries.
So, in reality, you're really not running the house. You're making electricity for the grid.
So, the way most of the storage systems work, or the way most of the electric systems work, is you are putting it back through a meter regardless of how you've got your house. If you have the batteries, you charge your batteries first. But a lot of the electric programs associated with the batteries also make an agreement with the electric grid that they can take power out of the batteries anytime they want for a certain number of times a year. Now, all the time, you're essentially trying to run or slow down your electric meters. So, either you run it backwards, it's stagnant, or it's running forwards during the day. You're running it backwards with the hope that night, you're running it forwards, and they balance out with each other. That's a typical array.
Yeah. And the only way you do that is if you can produce more than what you use.
Produce more or at the same, correct.
Can I add your question, Mike?
It's like putting money in the bank. You put it in, then you take it out when you need it. Same idea.
Same basic idea. And you generate more in the summer than you do in the winter. So, in the winter, technically, you're using up the bank, as you put it.
You hope for zero balance at the end of the year.
Correct.
Any other questions?
I'm just curious. What's the total height of this array? I don't see it in the drawings.
It's the backside of the array is the total height. But I put it to the installer for what the client is going to.
Okay. Well, we should note, though, that if the ordinance has a specific dimension, then they must be in compliance. And if they're not, they would need a variance or that can be part of the as-built. Is to confirm if we want to note that, that we need to note not only the setback, but the finished height, maximum height of the array relative to any requirement in the ordinance. Any other questions for the engineer? Okay, we're going to keep them both open. We ask you to sit if you'd like. And we'll suspend, we'll suspend the applicant's testimony for now. All in favor?
Hi.
Continue it suspended. We can open for a public comment if we have any. Sir, just introduce yourself clearly so that the secretary can get your name. I'm assuming obviously that you're one of the people who wrote the memorandum?
No.
You're not? Okay.
My name is Jose Garcia. I live at 54 Hillview Ave. I'm right behind.
Right behind.
The neighbors. I'm a little nervous. It's the first time coming up here, so I hope you'll forgive me.
Take your time. That's fine. Yeah.
So, I just wanted to thank you for giving me the opportunity to provide public comment for the application of a ground-mounted solar panel at 35 Norwood Ave. in North Smithfield. My name is Jose Garcia, and I am the homeowner at 54 Hillview Avenue, directly behind the property on Norwood Ave. Given the location on my property, my family and I will be the most impacted by the continuation of this project. So, therefore, I am here to share additional context for your consideration. First and foremost, I am here to advocate for the safety of my children. The ground-mounted solar panels compose a significant safety risk due to electrical wires that run behind and near the piers that were already installed prior to any approvals. While I will know the applicant does not mean any harm to our well-being, there simply is currently no safeguard to prevent access to these potentially dangerous ground-mounted panels. As you know, kids routinely go where they're not supposed to go, chasing after balls, pets, just going around and playing tag. And I'm raising this now as a potential risk to ever accidents in the future. Since I've arrived in North Smithfield a little over two years ago, residents have been warm and welcoming to my family. And I even made friends with several of my neighbors, which doesn't usually happen when you get to our age, but here we are. It was through my interactions with other butters who let me know the potential risk of having the panels installed as proposed. And I'm thankful for their expertise and input in this area. While I understand the desire for the applicants to install the ground-mounted panels, I hope they can also understand my concern as a parent of a five-year-old boy and nine-year-old girl. Their names are Joseph and Ava, who are at home right now, probably playing outside as we speak. They absolutely love living here and wouldn't change a thing. I only want to protect them if it's in my power to do so. I also mentioned the hidden dangers because a survey map submitted as part of the application does not show the gaps between the trees separating our properties. These gaps are wide enough to walk through. One side has no trees at all, and you can peer through them and see the other side, likely requiring an 11-foot fence to completely cover the proposed panels, which is currently not allowed by the town. They also, it's been referenced, you know, in today's hearing, that there is a buffer of a height difference. But it's also misleading to not say that my patio is greatly raised above that. And so, there's no way to necessarily avoid seeing it. Though the panels can be tilted, it will always be at an angle that is either at, near, or possibly over the property line if it requires constant adjustments since it's at the edge of our properties. I fear that without a fence that completely keeps the panels out of sight and out of reach, it could be the interest of my kids or of others' kids who might go off to explore and accidentally touch the electrical wires. And I wouldn't want that to happen for my kids or anyone else's for that matter. As you can imagine, we, you know, we routinely have children coming over to our house, our neighbors' kids. You know, it's like, it's not unusual for like them to kick over a ball and then run over there. And I just wouldn't want anything to happen to them. I hope my public comments will be heated, but I also hope that the applicants can achieve their desired savings through the installation of panels on their roof. From my understanding, their roof should be large enough to accommodate the panels needed to meet their energy needs. It doesn't require special permitting. It matches the aesthetics of neighboring properties. But most importantly, it is a safe and cost-effective alternative. Thank you again for this opportunity, and I hope any comments from neighboring butters will be reviewed thoroughly with caution for safety, health, and well-being for all residents.
Mr. Garcia, if you could, your property, does use the rear of this property? There appear to be abrevieties on the right side. And I'm trying to see if there's a picture here of the rear.
There's abreviations on the other side. That's what could be a little confusing in some of the pictures because it makes it seem that the abreviation is completely all around. There is a shared ginseng.
But have you?
And it does provide some coverage, but there's a lot of gaps in between at a higher level.
If you'd like to come forward. I don't know if you saw this drawing. So, this is you here, correct? I'm showing him, I'm showing him the plan. So, that's you there, P3. So, these would be new. Are these existing or those new?
These don't necessarily exist. There are some shrubs here. There is a weird island here with a tree right here. And then there is nothing over here.
And you heard us. We just discussed, and the applicant has accepted to put the abreviations here. Have you, Mr. Campbell, have you been to the site?
I've been to the property, sure.
And Mr. Garcia is concerned with regard to, is there a way to modify the buffering on the backside?
So, overall, the concern is how far apart the plant is. They should be planted approximately eight feet apart because of growing. If they're closer than that, they will kill each other.
Well, but the engineer is correct in saying that you can't put them, they'll choke each other. Each plant will kill itself within three years. And then you're going to say to the applicant, if this goes forward, why don't you replace them? And they're going to say, well, they're dead because that's the way they did it. The other option is to maximize the height of the fence and put some fabric on it so that you don't have a direct line of sight, you know, of fabric. See, the problem is, we're not, we're not in the position to negotiate and bargain necessarily on some, on substantial issues. We can ask them to comply with certain things, but it's not in our purview to say to them, well, you should just put it on the roof because that's what we think you should do. That might be your opinion, but we can't just arbitrarily say, we don't like this. We won't approve it unless you put it on the roof, and then you don't need our approval. So, the real question is, can we accommodate? The security could be achieved by what is required of them anyway, which is to fence both of them such that non-professional people cannot access it. And if you wanted to put a fabric fence, I think we all know that the fabric fence is minimal expenditure.
So, if I can address that quickly.
Go ahead.
We just asked the client, the backside of each one of those, if you would be amenable to us making it a vinyl fence rather than the chain link, they're happy to do that. It's an impermeable barrier on the backside as well as the plantings that we've already discussed.
That's very reasonable because it's a complete obstruction.
They're happy to do that, sir, and also if there is a concern about some gaps in the vegetation, notwithstanding the fact that they have to be planted a certain amount apart, we're happy to add in a couple more trees if there's a certain area that you're concerned about. But the idea is to provide, I mean, you have to say this is a proposal. Not everything that you see obviously has been put into effect.
And if this is, yeah.
Happy to see it, but I have to see it on paper.
Well, but if the relief, I just take one moment to the process. If the relief is granted, we will make a contingent upon certain things. And one of them will be that you can sit down with the zoning official as he gets the updated drawings from the applicant. And you're free to go to their office, even free to arrange for meetings, which is what we often encourage. And you look at it, and if you are accepting of it, if it's a reasonable approach, then that's the way we alleviate these concerns. So, let's just clarify. You're saying the back, because we're wrapping each one of these, correct?
We're wrapping each one of them.
So, the back elevation?
The back elevation here and the back elevation here, a six-foot vinyl fence.
That's north side? Yeah, it is. Or north, northeast, yeah.
Correct.
So, we'll put that in the motion as well, that the north and northeast will have a solid vinyl fence. And again, you're free to sit down.
So, it'll be over here?
No, no, fencing the actual array, yeah.
So, the array is fenced approximately three to four feet off of the physical array itself.
Just to give service access.
Service access and then prevent the access.
So, you have two forms of obstruction. You have the buffering of the plantings, and you have the buffering of the solid fence. We don't want to belabor this, but we've taken your point into consideration. And the applicant has been kind enough to.
Thank you for hearing.
Oh, you want, do you have anything else?
No.
Okay. Thank you, sir. So, we noted that. Any other public comment, please? Go ahead.
Evening, members of the board. My name is Charles Tice.
Speak a little bit closer to the mic if you could.
Charles Tice. I am also an butter to 105 of this project by the town. Myself and my wife, Ashley Tice, who's present, we submitted the memorandum in opposition. And I want to be clear to start off that our primary concerns relate deeply to the lack of process that has been followed here. We have owned and operated a solar development engineering firm for eight and a half years. And it has been our experience that, generally speaking... experience that generally speaking, when processes involving town permitting and special use permitting and dimensional variances are not followed closely, they typically will indicate that those people do not intend to be very careful about the overall installation of the project in its entirety. That has been our personal experience. It doesn't necessarily mean that that will occur here. I'd also like to mention, I, I have spoken in a number of zoning board meetings, and I, I always find it interesting when people proactively try to discredit what we want to say in opposition to a project by mentioning that I am not a licensed professional engineer. That is true. I have never claimed to be a licensed professional engineer. I am an engineer by trade and profession. I have a bachelor's of science in engineering, and as I said, I have been in this industry for eight and a half years. So you can take my position strictly from the perspective of someone who is in the trade. That is perfectly acceptable. There are a number of comments that have been made tonight that I continue to find concerning in terms of making them as statements of fact. One of the items has to do with the PE stamping that you brought up. So the engineer who is here this evening, who I have spoken to prior to this meeting, I hope it's clear, he mentioned that he has reviewed these documents in detail and has stamped them and certified them. I will note that repeatedly this evening, the number of 20 kilowatts has been mentioned as the minimum reasonable size for this array in order for it to be financially viable. That is not the size of the array that is being proposed on these drawings. The drawing that was restamped continues to say 36 solar panels, but it shows 32. And so the size of this array is actually just under 18 kilowatts. Again, as a point of fact, that detail has not been changed on the drawing, but it has now been stamped twice. The orientation of the right-hand side panels, the smaller array of panels, between the engineer drawing and the site plan also does not align. They're not the same. So these are just discrepancies that, as someone who works in this industry, I would find very concerning in terms of making sure that things are done precisely because they are not consistent, and that has now been reviewed by two different engineers and not perfected. There are a number of aspects of this proposal in terms of strictly talking about the relief requested. There were statements made about how the roof cannot support solar, and that's why that's not a viable option. I have not done a structural review of this building, but again, from my personal experience over eight and a half years, we have built dozens of projects on roofs. We have had exactly zero roofs that are incapable of supporting direct raft or mounted solar panels. We've, we've never experienced this. There were also statements made regarding voiding the warranties of the roof. Generally speaking, if that work is done by a licensed roofer, the one, these can be maintained, which is why many people proceed with that option. In fact, we were able to produce very quickly a design that would only use two of the four sections of this roof and accommodate the same number of panels as have been proposed on the ground. That is not to say that the applicant is required to proceed that way. It's merely to point out that this is not the only way of achieving this design. It should also be noted that it was mentioned that this is the most efficient design that is possible. In the updated site plan, there is fencing directly surrounding all of this equipment. That fencing will shade the solar panels, which will inherently make them less productive. So the current design would actually be, on average, less productive for rooftop system. There was also mention of the financial impact of the system. Rooftop systems, on average statistically, are 20 to 25 percent less expensive to build than a ground-mounted system. So these statements of fact, I would argue, were more opinion than fact. In terms of the relief specifically, there are a number of references in the ordinance is mentioning that this needs to be the least relief required, the minimum relief required. If there are alternative approaches that do not negatively impact the butters and are financially more feasible, it would seem to me that this is not the minimum relief required, because the minimum relief required would be to not pursue the project in this way. Again, most of our concerns really stem from the fact that documents were submitted with handwritten notes on stamped plans. They were inconsistent. Many of the documents, initially, there was very little notice. The documents had not been submitted prior to the meeting, which I understand there was a continuance, obviously, from the last event. So we would just really like to emphasize that in our experience through similar processes, had we submitted documents with this level of inconsistency, they would not have been scheduled for a meeting. They would have been rejected outright. And so I would encourage this board, at the very least, to ensure that all of the documentation that is submitted is consistent and reviewed appropriately for detail.
Just as a follow-up, Mr. Tice, Charles, thank you for clarifying and clearly stating your background in that while you have an engineering degree, you are not representing yourself as a PE. And your concerns, I'll, I'll make a few statements, and then members can, can add to that. The procedural issues that you, was the original flag, are more than valid, and we, I believe, sometimes not to the favor of the applicant, made that very clear. I believe in fairness to all parties that the path forward, if this is approved, has been clearly defined, both by the conditions that we currently have in the resol, in the motion if it's approved, and also the fact that the zoning official is quite aware. He's the one who went to the site and observed the excavations. It's his discretion. He didn't issue a cease and desist, which is fine, because the applicant agreed to then, quote, play by the rules. So from this point moving forward, yes, that's why the board raised the issues that we did about the double stamp, for example. But we have an engineer with a stamp providing professional information and opinions that the board can only rely on. His stamp is there to substantiate it. He's been very candid with us. And we also need to be mindful of the fact that we don't really have the right to negotiate. Now, I should qualify that. You just saw a negotiation occur. But that was a minor issue which was trying to appease a neighbor and a butter and the applicant. It's not the same as saying to the applicant, oh, go home and resubmit, I mean, you don't even need to be here for roof-mounted solar, as you well know. They have every right to install a ground-mounted solar if they comply with the special use permit criteria, and in this instance, they're asking for the variance for the small percentage overage. If you have issue with Engineer Campbell's stamp and his calculations, then if this is approved, from this day forward, you have every right, as you well know, to sit down with the zoning official and look at everything that is submitted. And you have every right to go after, back to him and say that this is my opinion as a professional in the industry that this is correct and this is not. And it's his obligation to flush it out and make sure that the applicant is being forthright in their, in what they're presenting. So, you know, that's where we are. Of course, the applicant could walk up right now and say, oh, you know, we're going to do rooftop. They don't have to do that, and we don't really have the legal authority to coerce them into doing it because that just would not be proper. So, all due respect, I think the best way to handle your concerns if the board approves the relief sought is to make sure that you stay in touch with the zoning official, because he will not issue a permit until he has all the documentation. And you have every right to get a copy of the decision if it is approved, and the conditions on the decision are very clearly going to be stated. And if any of them are in violation, then the relief is null and void, and that is a legal document. So you do have protection if the board gives an affirmative on the relief. That's the best that we can do trying to navigate through, trying to appease the butters and be fair to all parties, including the applicant. So, any comments or questions for Leo Butter? Okay, thank you, sir. We can bring back the applicant. Do we have anything further for them? Are we good?
Mr. Campbell just wanted to briefly respond to some of the comments on the plan.
Come up, please.
Evening again. Just as we talked about at the table, I wanted to clarify that the plans do contain a six-foot fence for security, as we previously talked about. Part of that discussion was changing the rear or the property line that faces the north northeast to a six-foot vinyl fence instead of the chain link fence, and that we would certainly meet with Leo Butter to discuss any gaps that currently appear, as well as finish the plantings around that corner.
Understood, thank you.
Right, and I just wanted to make one comment relative to the previous gentleman, Mr. Tice. We would be happy to provide him, if we are lucky enough to get the approval this evening, we put together our application for the permits that will be required, we will send Mr. Tice a copy of it the same day that we submit it to the town, so that he's got a copy of it, and obviously that way there can be, you know, if there needs to be a meeting, if something's inappropriate, he wants to speak with the building official, I will put on a condition that we will provide him a copy the same day that we submit it. The other comment I just wanted to make briefly is, we are a little bit unable to examine the gentleman about some of the things that he stated. He mentioned creating some kind of theoretical plan. He certainly had conversations with our engineer, Mr. Campbell. He was never sent to us, I've never seen it. I can't really respond to it. There's comments about the roof warranty and generally speaking. I would offer up that I don't think this gentleman knows the materials of the roof. I don't know if he knows the roofer. He certainly doesn't know the contract and doesn't know what warranty flows from it. So in, in just the same way that there was some ammunition at us about, I guess, making some conclusions without a factual basis, I think that we obviated all those issues. I think we have put the factual support before this board, and I'm in a situation where, Campbell, I can't even examine this gentleman on anything he said because I don't know what it's based off. So.
I, I have a question. Mr. Tice said that the array would not be 20 kilowatts. Are you assuring us that it is 20 kilowatts based upon the diagram?
Mr. Campbell, I'm not going to provide any testimony to that, all right, so.
Okay.
Based upon the panels that were chosen and given to us from the solar provider, yes.
And all the panels are clearly represented on the diagram?
They're represented on the diagram.
In their entirety?
Absolutely right. There is a typo.
Okay. Oh, there is a typo.
There is a typo, which we will absolutely accept.
Well, can we clarify where is, so we're talking about what we're calling P7A, correct? Which is the revised drawing that has both stamps?
Correct.
So where is the typo?
It is in the notes section.
Yep.
Thirty rather than thirty-two panels.
There's nothing in the notes that notes that. Again, we don't have the drawing you think we have. The total module count on our plan is 36.
Yeah, no, I'm trying to get back to the, the total panel count. It's 32 instead of 36.
So the 36th, the 34th and the, the 35th and the 34th would have been the two that were erased?
Were removed.
Removed. So this is supposed to say 32.
Thirty-two.
And that represents, what does that correlate to?
Twenty kilowatts.
That's-
That's the correct kilowatts.
Twenty?
Yes.
Can we put another condition in the motion would be that a P7A, that the total modular count be corrected to 32 and resubmitted?
I, I believe there was a question about height, and we would like to provide in the, the documentation that the height will not exceed the allowable height per the zoning code. Currently, it's at 15 feet. If it's the allowable, we will be less than that. I'm happy to provide that in the ad bill.
You don't need to, but it would be beneficial as long as you're compliant. That's fine.
Mrs. Chairman, one, one other issue. There, there was some questions about the, the consumption needs of this house. I can provide some testimony to that. I believe in the packet that was submitted to the board, there is some energy consumption data, but if it would be helpful, one of the residents of, of the home, not the owner, the owner's here this evening, one of the residents has a little bit more experience with these types of things and can provide some testimony to substantiate what's already in your packet about the electrical consumption, if you'd like.
I, I don't think it's necessary unless members-
No, the, the bill clearly shows what the average consumption is.
You have submitted, you have submitted sworn testimony that the two years is, so we have no reason to conduct an investigation and go searching for things. If, if, if it's been submitted that way, it's been submitted that way.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, unless the board has any other questions, me, Mr. Campbell.
Are we good? Any questions for either?
No questions.
Okay, thank you, attorney. A motion to close the applicant's testimony.
Make a motion to close the applicant's testimony.
All in favor?
Aye.
A motion. Are there any further public comments?
Can I just make one follow-up comment?
Yes, go ahead, please.
I just wanted to follow up on that question that you asked about the total panel count.
Yep.
So the original design listed 36 modules at 560 watts, which I believe is on what we've mentioned is P8, that shows the height of the, shows the angle of the racking system.
Yep.
So you'll see at the top left of that sheet, it says that the modules are 560 watts each. It's simple math, that now that there are 32 modules, 32 times 560 is 17.9 kilowatts, not 20 kilowatts, just to be clear about that.
No, you can come back if you'd like. But again, we have ambiguities in the drawing, so could Mr. Campbell, please come back up then? Will, can we reopen? A motion to reopen?
Make a motion to reopen the applicant's testimony.
Second?
I'll second the motion.
Can you address that? Again, we have a stamped document that appears to be in conflict. Can you please clarify?
So as I said previously, we're going to be providing a completely new document based upon the panels that are now provided to us, and I'm happy to clarify every single one of those.
Well, how does the, how does what's listed as the 560, how does that differ from the math that you just generated?
As, as I said, the 32 panels, the panels provided to me, I didn't specify the wattage of the specific panel. The panel that's recently been provided to me, that I had to review the documents, is a greater panel than that. I am happy to provide all of the documentation at the time we make the application, just like we stated.
And when it's all said and done, what does this truly mean?
That you're going to have a 20 kilowatt.
No, no, I understand that. When it's all said and done, you either increase the wattage of each panel-
Correct.
-or you increase the number of panels.
Correct, which would mean we would have to come back.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
All right, no, I understand. Anything else? Are we good?
Yes.
I would like to say.
Go ahead. You're the applicant?
Yeah, I'm her boyfriend.
What's that?
I'm her boyfriend.
You have to identify yourself, sir.
Russell Tividge.
No, you speak slowly so the secretary-
Okay, Russell Tividge. I just want to-
Did you get that?
Vivian? Is it his name?
It speaks slowly in the mic.
Russell Tividge. Okay, I just think this is an important document because one guy indicated, he, most he ever seen was a $7,000 utility bill. It says annual, I showed them the, the, annual total usage, 17,765.
And again, you are-
Today.
Who are you?
I'm the boyfriend of the owner.
The owner, okay.
Okay, but annual, annual 17,650.
And you gave that to the-
They have it somewhere, but it wasn't for this meeting. I wanted to be in the meeting.
Oh, that's fine. We weren't, we weren't, we weren't questioning the- We weren't questioning the veracity of the statement, but thank you for the clarification. Thank you. Are we good?
I am.
Are you guys, well, why don't you, you can still speak, because you're still open. I'll leave them open until you speak, in the event that they want to rebut what you're saying. Come forward, please.
Hi, my name is Ashley Tice, and I am a professional engineer. I'm a civil and environmental engineer in the state of Rhode Island, and I'm also the president and primary business owner of a solar development and civil environmental engineering firm. And my question is, because I ask this so that I can protect the integrity of the engineering profession, but also for the future other residents who will want to get solar, and I want them to have the best services provided to them, because obviously, I do advocate for solar. For every resident in North Smithfield, I want them to, just I want them to do it in the appropriate way. And I come up with, I developed drawing sets for all sorts of solar projects, including residential, and there are three types of engineers that may be working on a project like this. There are structural engineers, which was the original stamp, which would be necessary for a ground mount system. There are also electrical engineers, which would be necessary for the single line drawing, which I understand is not part of this submission for the special use permit. And I see that the stamp here is from a professional civil engineer, Daniel Campbell. And I'm wondering what his expertise was for this particular project, why he felt that he was, or is, and I'm not doubting that it is, I'm just confused, qualified. If he doesn't have experience with solar, he's not looking at the structural specifications of it, and he's unfamiliar with the electrical components of this solar system, or even the numbers that are written on this plan set. So, what is it that compelled him to stamp a residential solar ground mount system? That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Campbell, you're free to comment, if you'd like.
Mr. Campbell, unless you want to, you don't have to comment. He's a registered professional engineer in this state. In this state, unlike Massachusetts, there are no specialties. You're either a registered PE or you're not. He testified that he looked at all the local ordinance, that he looked at all the pertinent general laws, that he looked at all the appropriate information in developing the plan and stamping it, and that's our response to that question.
I don't believe that anyone on the board is questioning the PE's stamp. It is a PE. And just note that any other drawings that are required, that's in the ordinance. If an electrical drawing is required, it's in the ordinance, and the zoning official enforces it. Otherwise, this board would have this much in front of us, and we're supposed to interpret things that is not our expertise, just like your expertise is what it is. We are not in the business of trying to interpret an electrical drawing to determine whether or not it's valid. That's what the building and the zoning official is for. All I can say on behalf of the board is that this is a routine, relative, I know it's not routine to all of you, but it's relatively routine as to the process by which the application is submitted. There's a criteria that the zoning official and the building official, same, goes through with the stamps required, and the public is always able to challenge and go to the office. And if you're a professional and you have a valid issue, the zoning official has nothing to lose, and it's his job, his or her's job, to entertain your thoughts. So with that said, I think we can move on. Any other public comment?
I think she wanted to say something. Did you want to say something?
I just wanted to, so, as an engineer, I have a strict, if you're to facts, and yes, in the state of Rhode Island, there are different PE stamps. And in fact, electrical stamps must be stamped for solar many times by an electrical PE. I have a civil stamp as well, however, my area of expertise allows me to also stamp, as I have a master's degree in environmental, as an environmental engineer too.
Mr. Chairman, let me just stop you for a minute. There shouldn't be any testimony from a seat. If you want to testify, you should come to the podium.
You have to come forward, yeah, my mistake. Please, if you want to continue, I should have asked you.
This isn't why I was here tonight, but yes, Ashley Tice. But I feel that when something, again, is stated as a fact, but it is incorrect, that I would like to correct it, that in the state of Rhode Island, we do have profession-specific stamps. I'm a general civil, which means that I cannot stamp as a structural engineer for inhabited buildings. However, if I feel that I have enough experience as an environmental or in transportation, I can stamp using my civil stamp, which is why I questioned if this particular engineer felt that they had enough experience as a solar array designer to stamp this drawing set. It's up to them to decide. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for either? Why don't we, since we reopened the applicant, why don't we close the applicant again?
Make a motion that we close the applicant's testimony.
Second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we have to close public comments.
Make a motion that we close public comment.
All in favor, second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll go into deliberation. One minute here, let me get some, make some order of this mess. Okay, well, we, as we noted in nine point two point one, since both councils have agreed that the relief is hinted, we have a dimensional variance request and a special use permit. Since one is contingent upon the other, we hear them simultaneously. I imagine it's somewhat arbitrary. I'll go and do the variance criteria first, since that would seem to be the most compelling one. And then we won't vote until we have both, okay? So, nine point three point one. In granting a variance, the North Smithville Zoning Board of Review shall require that evidence to the satisfaction of the following standards be entered into the record of the proceedings, based on the testimony and evidence presented in a full review of the application and the record all presented at the public hearings. Based on that, the North Smithville Zoning Board of Review makes the following findings of fact. A, that the hardship from which the applicant seeks relief is due to the unique characteristics of the subject land, and is, and not to the general characteristics of the surrounding area, and is not due to physical or economic disability of the applicant. The relief, the hardship, you would say that it's, of course, it has to be unique to the characteristics of that specific property, because the square footage is less than what would be, what is in the ordinance. We don't really know how the sizes of the abutting properties. There is no physical or economic disability of the applicant. You can add as you'd like. Item B, that the hardship is not the result of any prior action of the applicant, and it does not result primarily from the desire of the applicant to realize greater financial gain. There was no prior action, other than the obvious, which was installing the cement footings, but again, that is not an action that's relevant to, and those could easily be removed, and they don't impact our decision process, in my opinion. Item C, that the granting of the requested variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area, or impair the intent or purpose of this zoning ordinance, or the comprehensive plan upon which this ordinance is based. This is always a bit of a wild card. We know that the comprehensive plan can be interpreted in multiple directions. You can find pros and cons for just about any desired use. Clearly, it would be in accordance in some respects, and you could also find places in the complaint, if you looked where you might be able to find that it's not. We know that we have, just in this year, approved at least two other ground mounted. Both of them probably had a little bit more of a buffer, but it is something that we have done, and we have at least twice this year. As to the altering of the general character surrounding area, of course, you can always indicate that any change you make to property A, that you didn't make to property B, alters the general character, but it doesn't appear from all of what we've seen, and the efforts to buffer and screen, that it would be, quote, a significant alteration, a general, significant alteration of the general character. That the relief to be granted is the least relief necessary. We heard, you know, testimony with regard to, from the abutters with regard to rooftop solar, which we know is, does not require an SUP, special use permit. But again, that is not, the least relief would need to be relative to the relief that's sought, not to an alternate. And what is being sought is a ground mounted solar installation. So, is it the least relief necessary? We have testimony, multiple accounts of it, where that criteria by which the engineer established the size is what is needed to cover the electrical. They've also submitted documentation. So, I think it is, and given that in this instance, it's a variance, a dimensional variance, and it's a percentage, we're talking about 1.03 percent of relief, and that's a relatively minor percentage, given the total of twenty. So, I don't think it's unreasonable to conclude that this is reasonable and the least relief. E, that granting the variant, excuse me, that granting the variance requested will not confer onto the applicant any special privilege that is denied by this ordinance to other lands, structures, or buildings in the same district. Again, that's always a wild card, because you can, you can push and pull that phraseology and meaning in whatever direction you want, but from a reasonable point of view, we know that every, every resident has the right to apply for a ground mounted solar. So the only thing that differentiates this is the relief of the dimensional variance, which is just over one percent. So while it technically always does confer a special privilege, because it is relief, that privilege is not denied necessarily to other structures, lands, and buildings in the same district, should they seek. Nine point three, two, two A doesn't apply, and that's a use variance. I just want to double check. We changed the, the law changed with nine point three point two B, right? Yeah.
Yes.
I'll read it, and then we can strike whatever is not applicable. I think I still have the old version. In granting a dimensional variance, that the hardship that will be suffered by the owner of the subject property, if the dimensional variance is not granted, is, shall amount to more than a mere inconvenience. I believe the rest has been struck, stricken?
Yes, that's correct.
Well, in this case, you wouldn't think that the 1.03 percent would do that, but it appears from their testimony that it has, I guess, so it would appear that, from their testimony and from documentation submitted, they would not be able to satisfy the previous electric demands without the relief. So, by definition, that would probably serve to define a mere inconvenience. So that's the criteria for the variance. We can add or to that as needed. I'll move right into the special use, and then we can go back if we need to add anything. Findings of fact. This is nine, section nine point two, special use permit. Item one, and it's the same criteria as to, the zoning board, written decision includes finding of facts to define compliance with the rules governing the special use permit, and that satisfactory provision and arrangement has been made concerning the applicable portions of the North Smithfield zoning ordinance. Findings of fact were supported by testimony and evidence presented at the public hearing as follows, item one. Ingress and egress to property and proposed structures thereon, with particular reference to fire or catastrophe. We've had this same condition with the other two, ground mounted. I think it's reasonable to conclude, based on the plan of the property, that the fire or police have easy access right and left of the driveway, onto the grass, to access both array locations. Item two, off-street parking and loading areas were required, with particular attention to the items in item one above, and the economic noise, glare, or odor effects of the special use permit on adjoining properties, and properties generally in the district. This is, you know, another one of those wild cards. The first part, the off-street parking is with this type, as we've seen with the other solar ground on the residential, is kind of a moot point. There is really no parking and loading. We know that technicians may, may visit the site once or twice a year, and they just pull into the driveway. And as it relates to ingress and egress, that's still been dealt with. The economic, it's extremely hard for us to ever find bona fide information that would confirm a yea or an nay, whether it's a benefit or a disadvantage. We just have never had information provided in either direction, other than whatever we happen to conclude of our own accord. Noise, we know that noise is really not an issue with ground mounted solar, we've been down this road many a time. The glare, we did note, and I did ask them to clarify, that the panels are directed to the south, southeast, and west away from, or south, southwest, away from the abutters, and directed towards the house. Odor effects, we know that, to the best of our knowledge, that's not relevant. On adjoining properties and properties generally in the district, you know, we had many comments about rooftop and you, solar, and if the applicant had chosen to do that, you have many people who have strong opinions, yea or nay, whether it be the architectural look of solar in their neighborhood, so you can look at it many different ways. We did, through our motion, if we vote in favor, and with Mr. Garcia, the abutter to the rear, the applicant was willing to make... to the rear, the applicant was willing to make concessions to improve, to benefit his concerns about his young family, and to maintain the security of the array so that children, their curiosity would not allow them to access. So I think in that regard, that's been met. Item three, refuse and service areas with particular reference to the items in one and two above, that's really not applicable, there is no refuse, in generally speaking. Utilities with reference to location, availability, and compatibility. If that was an issue, it's going to be dealt with by the zoning official when the application is formally submitted. There wouldn't be a reason, it doesn't appear, that Rhode Island Energy can't deal with this, because it's just a small residential system. Item five, screening and buffering with reference to type, dimension, and character. I think between the drawings submitted, the notes in the motion, that I believe we have dealt with screening and buffering, and actually gone a little bit beyond to try and satisfy the concerns of the abutter. And again, the motion will contain stipulations that the zoning official will need to ensure are met. Item six, signs, if any, and proposed exterior lighting with reference to glare, traffic, safety, economic effect. We know that signage is, again, addressed in the ordinance, and it's minimal in nature. There's no reason for it to be arched, and it would be on the front side of the array, which is facing away from the abutters. Required yards in open space. It's always a little bit ambiguous as to what that truly means in this regard. I believe we've dealt with it as a process of getting where we are through the information provided. There's plenty of open space, it's a residential property. Item eight, general compatibility with adjacent properties and other properties in the district. I guess that's still a true statement, whether, if the relief is granted, because it's not a significant, overly significant issue. It's two small clusters of array that are going to be shielded by a buffering and by fencing. And again, you can always argue, if you want to, about general compatibility, and that's a rather broad statement, but I think for the most part, that has been addressed, and we would say that it is, generally, it is compatible with the adjacent properties. Anything on any of those items for the variance or the special use permit?
No, I think you covered it.
Anything else we could, okay. You want to have a motion to close deliberation?
Make a motion to close deliberation?
Second?
I'll second the motion.
Oh, and David?
All right. So we need a motion from the floor, excuse me, from the board. Bethany, if you could.
Okay. Make a motion to approve ZBR 25-3, application for special permit for a ground-mounted solar potash system as an accessory residential use and as a dimensional variance for lot coverage in an RU residential district, with the requirement that the zoning official will obtain a memo from the original preparer of plot map of P 7A stating his permission to stamp the original map on his behalf, and a requirement that the zoning official obtain a modified zoning table on P 3 drawing dated 5/11/25 noting the amount of relief required, and requirement that the applicant match existing buffering on the rear right-northeast corner of the lot, and the applicant agrees to setback and max height of the array requirements to comply with our ordinance. Also that the applicant agrees to a solid six-foot vinyl fence on the north-northeast side of the arrays, and further that a required update to the notes section of P 7A will reflect 32 panels and be resubmitted.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, with respect to P 7, and whether or not it would be the original engineer's approval, I believe there was also a disjunctive, or that the, Mr. Campbell would submit a plan with his own stamp on it, is that what you were going to say?
Yes.
I think if you add that to it...
Yeah, that's correct. Yep, that's what was discussed. So we can add that, that either a memo from the original professional engineer, or a new drawing from Mr. Campbell, prepared by him and stamped by him.
I'd like to ask that the, in addition to the number of panels reflect the number that will be used, there be something that identifies with the aggregate kilowatt, kilowatts will be for that number of arrays. Whether it be 32 or 36, or whatever the number is, it reflect the exact number of arrays and the exact amount of power being produced.
Which is what you said he would do.
Okay.
But we can note that. The only other thing was to request that the zoning and building official get a certified plot plan upon completion to verify that all of the panels are within the 10-foot setback. I think that was a good one. I think we got everything.
Mm-hmm. I think so.
Do we need to hear it back, or is everybody good?
Good.
Okay. Good?
Yes. Do you want me to add anything officially on the record, or you've got it covered in the discussion? You don't want me to read it all back?
I don't think so. We, the only thing that we added that you didn't read, which is fine, is the certified plot plan and the qualification that Mike had mentioned, and also the option to the engineer Campbell to submit his own drawing with his own stamp. Okay. Why don't we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Chairman, before we have the roll call vote, who second the motion?
Good question.
No.
No one?
I'll second the motion. My omission. Thank you.
Okay, the roll call vote. Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
Mr. Mostyn?
Yes.
Ms. Benoit?
Yes.
Mr. Maki Antonio?
Yes.
Mr. Savini?
Yes.
That's five.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day, or good night, and good luck. Just give us one minute to do some paperwork cleanup here, and we'll get to the next agenda.
I have a lot of bullshit tonight. I have a lot of bullshit. Number one, you can't plant, you can't transverse it. Eight foot, you got to be eight foot. Come on, come on my yard, I'll show you.
Yeah, I know, I've done it.
Oh, yeah.
All that type of thing. And they're really, they're really producing more than they usually, and a lot of people do that. So they can break even.
I put panels in my life, and it's going to get kicked in the door. My electric bill, this time of year is about $42. The panels cover what I use, and usually they check for about $142 a side. I usually pay about $142. So what I get is all stupid panels.
If you had, if you had more panels, that'd make money.
This is the key. This is how you do it.
But see, that's why they put money on the front, so they get to have a few more.
National grid is very strict about what you can and can't do. National grid doesn't want you overproducing. National grid limits you to how many panels you can have. It's up to me. I would have walked in.
Let me tell you this, I had built a national grid. People couldn't move home when I was there.
Yes.
The national grid will actually take two years to build.
We good? Let's get back to business here. Vivian, you may have to help me on this, just because I had pieces, and so, we're on item seven, new business, ZBR 25-4, application for a dimensional variance. Property located at 10 Leonard Drive, North Smithfield. Owner of the property is Zachary Laduke. This is lot AP 014, lot 234. Applicant is seeking a dimensional variance and is seeking relief from section 6.8 accessory buildings and structures to build a shed in the front yard of his property, which requires a dimensional variance under section 9.3. Property is in an RA zone. Okay, so.
I read it. That's our number.
We'll call P 1, the actual application, which is ZBR 25-4. P 2 is the shed permit, which is SH 25-3. I printed that up because it was uploaded. P 3, I think most of us got the larger version of P 3, which is a untitled, unstamped plot plan of some extent of the property. P 4 would be the 200-foot abutters list report. P 5 is the radius map, 200-foot radius map. It's dated April 22 of '25, Axis CIS. Now, Vivian, that's all I have. Do we, am I missing anything?
Warranty deed and pictures. Do you have any pictures?
No, I didn't.
Let me...
So, okay. So I think we have them here. I can mark these up.
Yeah, I'll get them. What about the warranty deed?
Yeah, I'll need that. Or, I don't need it, we can just, we'll just give it a number.
Okay.
So P 6, we're getting good, better at this electronic, we're just switching over now, so it's taking some adjustment. P 6 is a Google map, 10 Leonard Drive. It's dated 4/25/25. It shows the property with the cul-de-sac and the driveway. P 7 would be some schematic architectural framing drawings. There's one, two, three, four sheets. They're undated. They were prepared by Sketch Up, and again, it's just the wood framing for what would appear to be the shed building. And the warranty, so this is P 7, so the deed would be P 8?
Yes.
Okay, would the applicant like to get up and make a quick presentation, please?
So I'm looking for a dimensional variance.
Speak a little bit closer.
So I'm looking for a dimensional variance on the existing slab, what property in 2022 that's allowing there. We're trying to build a shed on it, shed on that slab, just to get, you know, all the equipment, one equipment, all my stuff out of the garage, so that my kids don't, you know, injure themselves.
Okay, is that it? All right, if you could, I mean, it's kind of a unique property, because you're at a corner. What's the cul-de-sac? Is the cul-de-sac the entrance? Is that what you use as the entrance?
That is technically the front, what I consider the front yard.
Yep.
And then everything to the right of the driveway is my backyard.
So that driveway to the right is what you use, you just, that's access to your garage?
Yes, it's attached to that.
Now, I hadn't seen the, what we're calling P 6, which is the 10 Leonard Street Google map. So all of that growth, if you would, if you wouldn't mind coming forward. So is the apron, is the concrete pad in this U?
Yes, it's underneath that.
In here?
It is underneath those trees right there.
So is it, oh, is it visible from the abutter to the right?
To 12 Leonard?
Yeah.
You'd be able to see it through trees.
And again, this is, just explain briefly, based on this picture, why you couldn't put it, say, to the left of the property, or to the rear?
Which left of the property?
As we're looking down, which would be closer to Francona Street, right? Or Franconia Drive?
It is a big hill, but technically that is my front yard, and that's the, that's what everybody's looking at when they're coming into the neighborhood, so we're trying to hide the shed, so.
Which one is the front yard?
The corner of Franconia and Leonard.
No, that's what I thought you said, but if you went further down Franconia, towards number nine, I, we can't tell what the topography is, that's why I'm asking the question.
Okay, there is a large hill. My neighbor's yard is higher than mine, so we have steep incline.
So that's the neighbor at number nine?
Nine, nine, yes.
Yep. And then you have a heavy, heavy tree burden there. Okay. And where's the septic? I mean, is the septic in?
That's in the front, what I consider the front yard.
Okay, all right. So it's a little bit of a nuance, that it's, you know, not clearly defined, but the town interprets the front as facing the intersection of the two streets?
So I'm talking about what the front yard is?
What is, yeah, what is the town?
So on the drawing you have, the site plan?
Yep.
The dotted lines?
Yep.
You see the dotted lines on both sides? That's technically my backyard.
Oh, in between the dotted lines?
In between the dotted lines, it's still my backyard.
All right, okay. And did a survey, you said in your application that a surveyor prepared this plan, or you did not?
I did that myself.
And how did you, how did you get those dimensions?
So...
The 30 feet?
30 feet, I measured it myself.
But how do you know what 30 feet is?
So technically, my neighbor just did a survey.
Yep.
The stakes are still up.
And you're well within the 10 feet?
Yes.
But the other reason I'm asking you the question is because, in all due respect, and I think you can appreciate it, everybody always cringes at the phrase stamp, survey, drawing, but oftentimes, to be fair, we usually request it because that is the only way we can attest that it is, in fact, accurate. But given the fact that the line is really, right, but you created that line as well, or who created the dotted lines? You did?
I did, because technically, the front yard, frontage is considered from the front of my property to the front of my neighbor's property, the structure itself, you know. So I just went from corner to corner, and that's technically the frontage of my property.
Yeah. And what about, I noticed in the building permit application, that the zoning, the building official noted that, have you been able to prove that that has frost walls?
No.
So you're going to need to do that?
I, yes.
So this whole thing could be moot, if you would have to dig it up and redo it?
Could be.
Yeah, okay. So that's between you and the building official, I'm not, I'm not going fishing, I just wanted, I'm a builder, so I, you know, I couldn't help but see that.
Yeah.
But that's up to you, okay. All right. And we have the radius map, I missed all that, because it just fell through the cracks, but do we have anything else for the applicant?
I don't.
Okay. I think the only thing that's, you know, on the surface, it would appear to be a simple request, and the only reason that it becomes a little bit more palatable, I guess, to the board, is the fact that you've got so much, so much planting. guess, to the board, is the fact that you've got so much, so much planting, that it would appear that from, from Laconia Street, from, excuse me, Leonard Drive, it's obstructed almost entirely? Is it visible, or would it be visible?
It's visible, just because the clients don't have any foliage, or mops its feet, so you'd be able to see it.
Yep, but it's a buffer of some sort.
It is, yes.
And your, 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 the neighbor isn't present, is, is he? Number twelve?
Leonard, no.
Okay.
My neighbor on Frank Conia is...
Okay, and that's this gentleman here? Oh, okay, yeah, we didn't, I didn't have these, so we should enter these. Did we enter these, or we didn't?
No, we didn't.
Okay.
Is that another one, or is that a duplicate?
No, that's another one, yeah.
When did you get them?
Yeah, no, I need that one.
When did you get them?
Oh, could you come forward?
I got it tonight.
All right, just relative to this drawing, walk us through these...
So backyard, this is...
Take a look.
Looking out this way.
So this is the patio?
That's the patio.
Okay.
This is the patio to the driveway, regard garage.
And you're looking towards where?
Yes, so, this is actually this back corner, this back corner right here, so that playground, the shed is right here.
And what's the next drawing?
So we have just a street drawing on, a street on Leonard, so probably here, the slab is currently right there in the ground, you can just see that's...
Oh, it's just the grass has grown over it, or is it, is it there?
Yeah, so you can see, I mean, it's a six-inch slab, but it's right there.
Yep, and what's the next one?
Next one, that's just from the driveway, same view, yep, yep.
Vivian, what are we calling this?
P-nine.
P-nine, okay. And that's, you have that, okay.
I'm looking at this map.
Okay, anything else for the applicant? Okay, thank you. We'll close the, we'll leave it open. Do we have a public comment? We'll leave it open. Public comment, sir, please?
I'm Ken Trudell, nine Franconi Drive, and I'm here in support of, of Zach building this shed, on the largest abutter, a couple hundred feet at least, which I recently, in November of twenty-twenty-three, had my entire property surveyed and staked, not only in four corners, but in eight locations around the park. Because I was having some things done, and I wanted to make sure that I didn't abut anybody, or didn't, you know, I was having a bunch of trees taken down, yada, 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 and at the end of the day, I just wanted to make sure what I cut down was mine, that cutting down somebody else's trees. So, having done all that, I gave a copy of that line drawing to both Zach and my neighbor behind us, which I believe is twelve, that's, yeah, that was, I think, Mona, yeah, Mona, thank you, Mona Strick, so, and, so this right here, they knew where their property began and ended, and he knew where his began and ended, and everybody was happy and all that kind of stuff. Those, those stakes still exist today, so, you know, for what it's worth, if you want to just walk out there, you know, you see, in fact, the wooden posts, the neon posts still stick. He's well within all of those requirements and all that kind of stuff, from my perspective, and it's easy to take a paid measure and go from the state to wherever he's doing it. So his starting point is accurate by a, you know, signed, stamped drawing, which the town has a copy of mine, if you need it for reference, I'm sure that you can provide it to you. Everything Zach has done since he moved in has been of very high quality. I mean, the yard doesn't look, it never looked so good. The, the, the house is going through some changes, and everything he's done, it's been an improvement, so that's why you don't see the progress yet from that. But I just wanted to, to, you know, give him a thumbs up to the public.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Thank you. Okay, motion to close public comment.
Make a motion to close public comment.
Second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll go into deliberation for the, the variance, and essentially, the variance is to allow for the shed to be built on the frontage. Where does it, Leo, where exactly in the ordinance and the regs, does it say front yard only for, this is an accessory structure, I'm just curious.
Yes.
It specifically says not in the front yard, I know it says side yard, but does it specifically?
Side and rear, yes.
Yeah, so, but it doesn't specifically say not in the front yard? I'm just curious, because I couldn't find where it said not.
No, it doesn't say like that.
Okay.
Side and rear.
Side and rear, okay, all right.
And when you visualize, if, if the other structure was further out, I wouldn't even have called it. Basically, it's a little bit in front of the other structure, so...
And if we could get your, we don't normally do this, but just, we might as well get your opinion on the definition of whether that's, in fact, the side yard, or actually the front yard, the way he drew it?
It, it falls right in front of the structures, if you, like he drew the line, because I think I went over that with your...
Oh, from twelve to ten?
Yeah.
Or, yeah, okay, so they're by definition almost...
Because when you're out there visually, you can see that it sticks out beyond the next structure.
Okay, all right. Okay, I, I think normally, we're pretty steadfast, I will commend Mr. Leduke, it's a very nice drawing. Usually, we're steadfast in saying that we want a stamped drawing. I think with the testimony of the abutter, and the realization that we're nowhere near the ten-foot setback, I, I think I'm inclined to accept this as a formal document in lieu of a stamp. And then, the foundation itself, excuse me, the apron itself, you know, he has to prove to the building official that he has frost protection, and he'll have to do some exploratory activating to see if there's a footing, and, so, he may find that, he has to dig it all up. I think if you look at the pictures, you know, there's, there's sufficient coverage that, there is nothing in the ordinance that says necessarily that you need to buffer, you know, and it's somewhat arbitrary to, you could easily define this towards the cul-de-sac as being the front of the, pretty, so I think, you know, you could, you can make an argument that he's already to the rear, so. Okay, we'll just go through this findings of fact, nine-point-three-point-one, as I had noted before, in granting a variance, the North Smithfield zoning board of review shall require that evidence to the satisfaction of the following standards be entered into the record of the proceedings based on the testimony and evidence presented, and a full review of the application and record, all presented at the public hearing, the North Smithfield zoning board of review makes the following findings of fact. Item one, that the land, that the hardship from which applicant seeks relief is due to the unique characteristics of the subject land or structure, and not to the general characteristics of the surrounding area, and is not due to physical or an economic disability of the applicant. We know that the concrete pad was not created by the current owner. It is unique in that it is located where it is, so it's, unique characteristics of the subject land or subject, and not to general, you know, it's, it's a, that, that one is always, again, another, another juggling act, and it is unique in that most properties do not have a apron of concrete, a pad that has been poured into a corner. So it is unique in that regard. If it were back three, or four, or eight feet, it would be a moot point, he wouldn't even be here. B, that the hardship is not the result of any prior action of the applicant, and does not result primarily from the desire to realize greater financial gain. As we noted, the previous owner, it is his or her action, but obviously, that can't be held against the current owner. So there was no prior action by the applicant. C, that granting the, granting of the requested variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area, or impair the intent or purpose of this ordinance or the comprehensive plan upon which this ordinance is based. I don't believe, we have sheds, you know, all over the town, this one's nestled in the corner, it does have plantings around it, I don't think for a minute that it would alter the general character of the area. We have an abutter who is strongly in favor, and has complimented the current owner for the upkeep of his property. And of course, the comp plan, I, I don't know that it's even relevant, because sheds are all over the place, and we all need them, because most of us have them. D, that the relief to be granted is the leaf, relief, least relief necessary, you know, he's within, he's certainly within the ten-foot side yard setback. His drawing of the hash line, he's right on it. The zoning official indicates that technically, it is a direct line of sight to the abutter at number twelve, but again, it's, it's shielded by a degree of, of existing trees, and you could argue, again, that that isn't the frontage, that it's actually the side. So, I think, doesn't appear to be an issue with least relief, and it's just coincidental that that is where the apron or the concrete pad was installed by the previous owner. E, that granting the variance requested will not confer on the applicant any special privilege that is denied by this ordinance to other land structures or buildings in the same district. Special privilege is not really, in this instance, probably isn't applicable, because, again, we have sheds all over the place, and it's a bit of a nuance as to the definition of side and rear on the, on the lot, location for the shed to be compliant. Nine-point-three-point-two, A, doesn't apply. B, in granting the dimensional variance, the hardship that would be suffered by the owner of the subject property, if not granted, shall amount to more than a mere inconvenience, the fact that, yeah, that's it, period. It's a bit of a moot point, clearly, we know that, yes, he could move the shed back closer to his children's playground, I don't think that's optimal for anyone, the safety of the children and their enjoyment. They have testified that the rear property has a significant grade differential and slopes down towards number nine. So, I think it does amount to more than a mere inconvenience, and we have concrete there that the applicant would either have to dig up, which is an expense, or let it sit there and do nothing with it. So, I think all in all, it does meet that threshold of more than a mere inconvenience. Anything to add by anyone? Okay, all right. Do we have a motion? We don't need any conditions on the motion, I don't believe, right?
No.
Okay, then...
Make a motion to approve it.
We'll have, Mary, Bethany can make the...
Make a motion to approve application ZBR twenty-five dash four, for a dimensional variance to build a shed in the front yard of this property in this RA zone.
I'll second the motion.
Do we note, it was on the concrete apron, or concrete pad? Should probably note that.
Okay, amending the motion to approve to include a statement that this shed will be placed on the pre-existing concrete slab in the front yard.
Correct. I think that's more accurate. Okay, we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, roll call vote, please, Vivian.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
Mr. Mastin?
Yes.
Ms. Benoit?
Yes.
Mr. Mac Antonio? Mr. Savini?
Yes.
Good luck. Motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.